And everyone should be in now.
Great, thank you. Okay, good evening. I am calling this public meeting to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on January 8th, 2025, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearings will be followed by our regular meeting, and in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itimary with the Environment Department.
Dede Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Okay, is that it? Okay, I'll call the role of Commissioners. Commissioner Sullivan?
Oh, Chair Parker, Commissioner Sullivan will be present tonight.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Linay?
Amy Linay.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Condon?
Conan DeWingram.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Ian Herbst.
Great, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is notice of intent for DEP File Number 006-2018 and Boston File Number 2024-038 from VHB on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation Division of Waterways to conduct up to four test borings to unland and two within the Charles River located at 525 Western Avenue in Brighton. Resource areas are land under waterways, bordering land subject to flooding, 25-foot riverfront area, 25-foot waterfront area, and 100-foot buffer to inland bank. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
That's me. Hello, Commissioners. This is Stephanie Krul from VHB. I am joined by Greg Robbins from DCR and also several of the project team members.
Great. The floor is yours.
Thank you. DCR is proposing to conduct some exploratory geotechnical borings to inform the design of a new public dock that is proposed in Herter Park, and that dock will be the subject of a future NOI. So this is just for the borings. Next slide, please. The project site is located in DCR's Herter Park on the Charles River. It's part of the Charles River Reservation. The surface conditions at the project site include vegetated areas on the land side as well as a portion of the Charles River. The team conducted a site visit with staff last week, the second, I believe. Next slide, please. The proposed work is related to borings. There'll be a total of 0.4 square feet of impact on the land side, and that is within BLSF, riverfront area, waterfront area, and buffer to inland bank. You can see kind of the two black and white circles labeled B1 and B2 on this figure on the land side. These landside borings will be conducted using a drill rig. The bore holes will be between five and six inches in diameter, and the way it works is a pipe is drilled into the ground in five-foot increments. The pipe is washed out. Samples are taken from the bottom of the bore hole, and this keeps on being repeated until bedrock is encountered, and then the drill cuttings are returned to the bore hole, and surface conditions are restored to original conditions. And then similarly with the in-water borings, they'll be done the same way, but they'll be done from a barge. The work won't result in any permanent impacts, and it'll take place over up to two days, one day each for the land side and water side, and they'll occur during normal weekday business hours. There'll be erosion sediment control measures in place during work. And that is about it. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. Eleanor?
We don't have anything either.
Okay. Commissioner Linay?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Love you, Heidi. Thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
How deep is the boring? I guess you said it until you hit bedrock. Is that correct?
Right. The purpose of this is to identify the depth to get the structural support for the piles that will be installed as part of the dock project.
I see. Yeah. Well, I'm always curious about when we drill, what kind of temperatures we get up to and what the composition of the soil is as we get down there. It's just a matter of curiosity. Will you be looking at anything to study what comes out, any physical attributes of it at all, or just it's just a depth question?
So I'm going to actually have my colleague at HNA, Andrew Chan, answer that.
Yes, we're actually just collecting blow counts, which are a correlation of energy to drive that casing that Stephanie mentioned earlier, to correlate the strength of the sand and, you know, silt and clay and the other things that we encounter below grade. We won't be retrieving more than, you know, a jar full of sample to take a look at visually back at the lab. We're not planning on performing any kind of testing, chemical, physical, or otherwise.
Okay, just strikes me as an opportunity to understand what's going on down there, but I understand the goal here. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat via the application in the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six. Unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. Eleanor, are the, is the order of conditions ready to go?
Yes, the conditions should be ready to go.
Okay. Do you see any raised hands?
I do not see any raised hands, and we haven't received anything in the inbox either.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Condon?
Hi.
Commissioner Richmond?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote ayes, that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP File Number 006-2021 and Boston File Number 2025-002 from Engineering Alliance on behalf of the, oh yeah, I'm sorry, on behalf of Eight Brooks Street LLC for their proposed renovation of an existing single-story commercial building to a three-story mixed-use development with four residential units and first-floor commercial space located at Eight Brooks Street in East Boston. Resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
That would be myself, Eric Bretnisi, Engineering Alliance, the civil engineer for the project, and I believe Thomas Walsh, a representative from ownership of Eight Brooks Street LLC, is also here.
Okay. Okay, Eric, all yours.
Thank you very much. So the project is located at Eight Brooks Street in East Boston. As you can see on this first slide, property is located within the 100-year floodplain. It's a Zone AE known as land subject to coastal storm flowage with a base flood elevation of NAVD 88, sorry, 10 on datum NAVD 88 and 16.45 on Boston City Base. If you can move to the next slide. The property is currently occupied by a single-story commercial building that is an ice cream shop. The building first floor is located above the 100-year floodplain elevation at 16.747, so we're just above the floodplain elevation, and that will remain at the same elevation in the proposed condition. Next slide, please. So this plan is the existing condition site plan. It demonstrates the location of the existing commercial building. It covers the majority of the property. There is a concrete area at the rear of the property currently. The subject property is just over 1,400 square feet, 1,463 square feet, and the building takes up just over 1,000 square feet of the lot. As I previously mentioned, the building first floor is above the 100-year floodplain, but the entirety of that concrete area in the rear yard is located within the 100-year floodplain. Next slide, please. This just demonstrates the location of erosion controls that'll be placed for the proposed work during, during construction. This is perimeter controls will be straw waddles and siltation fence that'll be placed around the edges. This will be inspected periodically throughout construction. It'll be replaced as necessary if any get damaged. If you can move to the next slide. So this is a look at the proposed work. The project proposes to construct a two-story addition above the existing commercial footprint and convert the building into a mixed-use development with four residential units and the existing commercial unit on the first floor. So the existing ice cream, the existing ice cream shop will remain in place after the residential units are constructed. The first-floor ice cream shop will be renovated just to have building access, as you can see on the right side there at the bottom, but the use will remain the same. All the living space will be constructed on the upper floor, so all the living space will be at elevation 29.47 Boston City Base. It's just over 13 feet above the limit of the 100-year floodplain, so all the living space will have, will be significantly above the floodplain elevation. And as again, as I noted before, the first floor is just, is just above the floodplain elevation as well. If you can move to the next slide. And this final slide is the proposed site plan. This includes utilities in the stormwater management system. We are showing in that rear yard area a subsurface infiltration facility that consists of Caltech chambers. The roof will get directed there where it can directly infiltrate. Systems have been sized to meet the requirements of Boston Water and Sewer's, one inch of runoff over the roof area, the impervious area on the site. We actually received approval from Boston Water and Sewer just this afternoon. That rear yard area is also proposed to be a grass area, so what we plan to do is remove the concrete from the back there and provide grass in that rear yard area just so that we will reduce the impervious area on the property. And I think that kind of sums up my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Sure. Thank you. Where are the mechanicals located? Above the floodplain?
That is correct. Yeah, they will be, they will be located, most of them will be located up on the first floor, sorry, the first residential floor. If there are any that'll be needed to be placed on the lower floor, it'll certainly be above the 100-year floodplain.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I noticed somewhere a notation about rye grass instead of lawn. What is, maybe Commissioner Linay would have, would know this, and I should ask her, but what is the difference? What is not running to rye grass before? What is that?
Um, yeah, I'd have to defer. So, so I just know that in, in these areas that typically within floodplain areas, rye grass is something that is typically spec. So we, we had a discussion at the sidewalk that, you know, we're certainly open to whatever the commission would like for us to put back there. If it wants to be rye grass, if it wants to be standard lumen seed, we're, we're open to whatever suggestions may have.
Okay, okay. So I guess I'll go to Eleanor, because that's probably where I saw this notation for rye grass. So maybe if you could shed some light on that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think that with the rye grass versus lawn, we didn't have as much insight into, into that choice necessarily, but we, we did have a few questions about the yard generally, if it's okay if I go into those.
Sure, please do.
Great, yeah. So there are a few photos from our site visit, and Eric, I know that we talked about this when we were on the site, but currently there is a decent amount of sort of debris and like stockpiled items that are in the backyard. So we would just recommend if the commission voted to issue an order of conditions that those conditions include a prior to construction condition that requires that debris and sort of any items that are being stored back there to be moved before any work begins. And the other point that we had was just wanting to make sure that there's something somewhere in the documentation of the property that would prevent perhaps future owners or anybody renting these units from paving over the grassy area, given the fact that it's the only sort of, yeah, only permeable area on the site. And then a question that I had, Eric, for you was just about the, I know that we have discussed how the back area would be used between the residence and the ice cream shop that's on the first floor, and we had just sort of, you know, we were kind of looking at where the trash bins were stored right now and how that was going to work. And so I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more to that, and I just wanted to make sure that the plans that we have currently are going to, you know, are the plans that you're planning to construct with, and if there have been any changes to the paving that you're suggesting in the, in the back of the area.
Yes, so you know, the, 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 the plan submitted, I think, hadn't been modified since we had this discussion at the, at the sidewalk. I do believe that there would be, so, so if we can go back to the, the last slide, if there's, there's a possibility to do that. I, so, so it's a little tough to see on this plan, but right on the right side up the top where, where the words proposed subsurface infiltration are, there's a little alleyway back there that I believe is currently used as a right-of-way access for, for, for trash to be removed from the back of the site currently. The plan would be to still do that. I, I'd have to have some discussions with the owners, but I do think that maybe we would put some type of, you know, we'd like to keep the area pervious, so maybe it'd be some type of a pervious paver or something over there rather than like a standard concrete. But we would, as we mentioned at the sidewalk, it, it is something that we're looking into, to, to update. So I just would like to know, we'd like to keep the area pervious, so we're not going to put, you know, like a standard concrete or something like that. It may be a paver of some sort just to have the trash stored back there. But the general use of the rear area is, is meant as a recreational area for the residential units above the commercial. The only use for the commercial in the back there would be just to have their trash bin stored. And one item to note, I realized I hadn't mentioned in the presentation, there's also additional, there's also additional space for the units. There are roof decks that will be above the, the third, the, the third story, the third story, the third story of the addition. There'll be roof decks that will be on top of that as well, that would, that would be usable space as well.
That's helpful. Um, yeah, so just, I think my only note on this is that we've recently, on a different project, received feedback from DEP that they would not support the commission allowing any amendments that would increase impacts to LSCSF. And so, so that's the only flag here is that I think if the commission were to vote to issue an order of conditions for this project, if there were modifications to the plans that didn't involve pavers and ended up, you know, causing part of the site to be permeable, that wasn't before, that, that just might be like a logistical issue. But I think otherwise, that, that answers my questions.
Okay, thank you. Just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself, or send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov. The question about the roof, Eric, was there any thought to a green roof or in the design for the roof decks, vegetation, and things of that nature to make it a greener roof than usual?
Um, not that I am aware of. I think the, the majority of the area up there is just, is intended to just be like a usable open space for the upper units as well.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Linay, and if you have any input on that rye grass issue, from what I'm getting on my search here is it's a meadow pasture-type grass, and maybe it performs better than lawn?
Yeah, I'm curious, maybe if you had considered a mix for that, for that lawn, a mix of, you know, something in addition to the rye grass, and then if there was any consideration for, you know, other types of plantings like perennials. I can understand you're probably trying to maximize the usable space back there, but maybe an edge treatment. It looks like it's a pretty sunny site from, in that, in that back zone. So just curious if that's something that you've looked at?
So we haven't, the only, the only thing being, and it's good to have the site plan up here, right in the back there where that 29.25 dimension is, there's actually some access and door locations to, to the neighboring properties there. So it'd be a little difficult to put any type of, of, of edge treatment around that particular spot at the rear there. We may be able to do something along the sides. Our, we are very open to, you know, whatever the commission would like for us to look into doing there. So, you know, we're happy to, maybe somewhere to the left side there where we're away from the stormwater system and where we may have to put those pavers for the, for the, for the trash bins, looking into doing something in that area. The, the big thing back here is that it's a little difficult to access. So aside from a stairwell for the residential units and then a separate stairwell for the ice cream shop on the first floor, there's no direct access to get back here except for that easement area that, that there's access to get the trash out. So for maintenance purposes, we kind of expect it is just grass currently. But again, we're, we're, we're open to coordination and happy to, to look into. If, if, you know, perennials is something we'd like to add back there, we can certainly look into, to adding that.
So if, if it's turf grass and maintenance is a challenge, is it going to get mowed or just allowed to, to grow full height?
There, we'd have some sort of, some sort of agreement for the maintenance back there to make sure that it is, that it is mowed, certainly.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson? Did we lose him? Or is he muted? Let's go to Commissioner. Oh, there he is.
Sorry. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Folks just came in. Yes, no, a couple of questions. I guess following up on that, the discussion about the rye grass, is it that it's the, the sort of planting choices because it's in the floodplain or is it because of like a maintenance type of thing? Like, you might be able to do like a no-mow fescue or something like that that might work in that location?
Yeah, so, so maintenance was the main concern, just again, because it's a little tough to access back there. But again, it's also something, the, the rye grass was something we considered, again, one for maintenance and two for the fact that it is something that's typically spec'd for, for, for land subject to coastal storm flowage. But we're, again, we're open to, for the material back there. You know, we're kind of open to any suggestion. It's, it's, it, it, again, main, main concern being access and maintenance as to why we wouldn't do any type of like larger plantings back there. It'd be a little difficult to, to maintain anything in, in the small space back there.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I guess one of, sort of one of the standard sort of questions that we have for the infiltration units and stuff like that in the rear is whether you've sort of talked to your butters in terms of like the amount of water loading that's going to be going along their property line there and whether they may have had any concerns.
I don't believe we've had any direct access or any direct discussions with them. I, I, I will say that with the implementation of the stormwater system and then adding the grass back there, I do think that any concern for stormwater, I mean, anything that is, that is cheating or moving in that direction back there will be now captured, and I think this is going to create a pretty significant improvement there. But we're open to discussion for, for that as well. I just don't think there's been any direct communication at this time.
Okay, yeah, but they've received notice, so that's sort of the opportunity's been there. And then the last bit was that I was just noticing on this plan here that your finished floor elevation is surveyed here is literally like a hundredth of a foot above the floodplain, and that seems to be very close in terms of, it's sort of understanding the resilience of the property. I guess, how, how are, how are you reconciling that? I know Six Brooks was redeveloped recently or went before ZBA recently. That seems to be lower, but as drawn as having sort of the same street level elevation. So I was just curious.
Yeah, so it's going to be very similar to that Six, to the Six Brooks Street project. I mean, the, the existing commercial floor in both buildings is, is remaining at the, the floor elevation that it's at. It's, that's mainly because we don't really have any other way to provide access to the building from there, so we're kind of limited in keeping the floor elevation where it's at. For this one in particular, as far as, you know, the, the 100-year floodplain is concerned, you know, I, I understand we're, we're very close, but technically we are above it. So, you know, I don't think there's anything, relatively speaking, that is required for us to do for that, but I, I will say, and it's noted in the notice of intent, you know, we will be taking the, the, the standard precautions as in like, I, I think one of the other commissioners had asked earlier as well, you know, our mechanicals will be up on the first residential floor, so 13 feet above. And then if there's anything that needs to go down there, you know, it's not going to be on the floor on that first floor where we're right at the, right at the elevation of the floodplain or just above by, you know, a quarter of an inch. Those things will be raised wherever they need to be raised to, and, and we'll, we'll be taking those, those sort of precautions there. But again, we're kind of limited in the fact that the, the floor is where it is, and to have access from Brooks Street to the building, there's not really any ability to change it there.
Yeah, no, no, completely understand, and sort of the exigencies of adaptive reuse and stuff like that is something we have to reconcile. I guess just, and given that it is a commercial floor, floor use, is, are there opportunities for, in addition to say like the elevated mechanicals, electricals for some sort of like, you know, wet floodproofing of that? Or, you know, that some future tenant or something like that has the ability to sort of move things around in order to make that more resilient over time?
I can certainly, we can certainly look into that, yes. I, I don't think there's anything at this time, but I'm happy to look into that.
Okay. All right, that, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thanks, Chair Parker. Couple of questions. If you can go back a couple of slides where you showed the elevation, the flood, the flood map? Or previous one, previous, previous. Yeah, thank you. Did, did I hear you say, Eric, that you're outside the 100-year flood area or?
Yes, so, so the flood map here shows, show, so this is elevation 10 NAVD 88. This is based on the FEMA flood map that's provided. But based on the survey that we have, that's on a couple of slides further, you can see we have some spot shots and elevations that show that our, our first floor is, it's .02 feet above the floodplain elevation. So we are above it, but we're very close to it.
And what is the area with the black dots?
That is also, it's a, it's a different type of special flood hazard area. I'd have to, I, I don't know off the top of my head the exact wording for it, but it's another type of special flood hazard area.
Just trying to get a sense of the vicinity that you're in and therefore the vulnerability. And this is a coastal neighborhood, and it is an EJ neighborhood as well. The climate concerns are particularly high in some of the parts of the city more than others, and I would say this is one such neighborhood. And I heard your statement earlier about what is required. These are the kind of areas where I think it kind of, it's incumbent upon all of us as people living and working in the city to go a little bit beyond what is required and do what is responsible, I would say, considering that we want these buildings to stick around for 50 years or longer as their design life, and currently the, the map doesn't show the kind of risk that we're under. A couple of suggestions here. One with the roof, you heard Chair Parker's question about the green roof, and I heard your response about it's for use. It can be green and still be in use. So it can have dwarf trees, and it can have other kinds of vegetation. That is good in general for climate, but also keep the house cooler and still be nice for people. But also keep the house cooler and still be nice for people to get up there and use the space, that's a thought. And um, the question I had was, the commercial space, do they not have their own appliances?
Uh, they do.
And where will they be?
They'll be uh, they'll be located wi- wi- within the unit. Um, are you are you referencing like the the mechanicals?
How safe will it be from the flood is the question, from a hundred year flood? Or even maybe a five hundred year flood, I don't know if you if you looked at that.
Yep, yep, so so any, so you know, any electrical or like like when when we reference mechanicals, you know, it's anything like a um electrical panels or. Um, you know, thi- things, things of that nature, those things will be, you know, a- as I mentioned, they'll be. They'll be placed above the one hundred year floodplain, so technically our floor is above it. But the, you know, panels will be placed on the walls where they're significantly above, you know, a few feet above. Uh, so there'll be some sort of um separation between that. And then any mechanicals for the residential's above will be on the fir- the the floors above as well. So um, the 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 note there is that, you know, these things that need to be raised to be above the the floodplain. Aren't just going to be right at elevation sixteen point four seven, they'll be raised above, uh you know, uh where where necessary. And where and where where we can do so, we'll provide as much clearance as we can.
And I understand the spirit of the statement there, but it seems like you don't, you can't quantify. How much clearance you can provide at this point.
The only reason that being said is, you know, we don't have like a design for where the electrical panel will specifically go. And what the height of that electrical panel will be at this time, but you know, those um. I I I think it's it's a fair statement to say that it'll be, you know, if a a few feet above off the floor on the wall there. Where we'd be, you know, a few feet, few, three, four feet above the the floodplain elevation.
I see, okay, thank you, that's all Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you, uh Commissioner Richmond.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think you you're getting um the point from all of us. That um, you know, the the regulations, um you know, speak in terms of minimum stuff. But that, you know, given that the renovation and given the hope that you're this building will. You know, house people living in it, um, you know, the the fact that it it is, you know, so close. To a flood level, which we know um is not very far in the future. And I um have some questions, for example, about this, is the building as renovated? Going to have an elevator?
It will not.
It will not, okay, so um, how do people get out of that building? In the event of a flood?
Um, I I I mean, the the build, this is a building code item where there'll have, there'll be multiple um points of egress. Where they'd be able to um exit the building, so there'd be the, there'd be the exit at the front of the building for for the residential. And then an exit at the rear of the building for residential. Um, uh I I'm not sure I understand the nature of the question, is this, is this?
I mean, you got a flood, you know, let's just say that there's a flood and people need to get out of that building. Um, you know, uh the water swirling around the bottom there. Um, and and you know, it just, it seems like um, we're not really paying a lot of attention to what happens. When these um events, the flooding events occur. And I, you know, I guess, what you just said, which really um upset me a lot, was that you don't. Um, know even where the electrical panel is going to be for the first floor ice cream parlor. I mean, it seems to me that those are the kinds of things um that, you know. You ought to have decided already, so that to the extent that you can minimize um dangers. Um, that that we know are going to occur, uh you do that. And um, you know, I I understand that it's a building code issue. But for me, I'm sitting here, you know, approving as a commissioner on the Conservation Commission. The work that you're trying to do, I'm thinking about, you know, somebody who's in that building, who's handicapped or older. Or, you know, has some trouble navigating stairs and other things. And you know, you add to that that there's swirling water outside. So, you know, I understand that the commission, the con- Conservation Commission is not the right place. Um, for that issue to be decided. But it seems to me that with respect to the things that you can do um about being sure. That, you know, the the materials and the equipment that might be in the parlor, don't go floating out. Um, you know, and and I think the suggestion about um the green roof again. Uh, is is a very good suggestion. If we're gonna rebuild sections of the city, which is what essentially uh you're asking this particular commission to approve. It seems to me we ought to be doing it better than we did it the first time, so lecture's over. Um, you know, I I am not um. Happy with, you know, some of the answers you gave, um but I understand that, you know, you are constrained by. You know, stuff that you don't have a whole lot of control over, but the stuff that you do have control over. I think you ought to be um deciding uh to be more um attentive to these issues.
Okay, thank you, uh Commissioner Herbst.
Nothing additional from me, thanks.
Okay, okay, uh Elena, I don't see any hands, do you see any hands?
I do not see any hands raised and I also don't see anything in the inbox.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Uh apologies, I had a quick uh clarification on Commissioner Wilson's uh question related to. Um, exploring other options in the grassy area on the back. And um I just wanted to sort of clarify that language before uh the commission voted on anything, if that's possible.
Okay, sure, um I think the best way to handle that and Commissioner Wilson, tell me if you agree, is that um Eric, you provide a um. Uh, a final landscaping plan before construction?
Yes, no problem at all, absolutely.
Thanks.
Sounds good, thank you.
Big thanks, okay, okay, so with that, um, uh I think I think what I have here are special conditions regarding the landscaping plan. Uh Eric, I think um we would, we would like to see some sort of analysis uh or study of the roof. Uh regarding the potential for uh a green roof. Um, and I know that, you know, what we run up against are structural issues and things like that. So uh generally proponents are able to tell us, you know, why um if they can't do a green roof uh in some fashion. Why they can't and it's usually structural or um limitations of space, which also relates to structural uh issues as well. But I think um we'd like to see that, uh that's what I've heard. Also that the uh electrical panels, um I have no doubt they'll be uh mounted higher than ground level. But um uh we'll need the uh final, final specs on that as well. Um, and I think that was it. So with that, um, I would entertain a motion to issue uh an order of conditions and close the hearing. The order of conditions having the three special conditions that I just um articulated.
And Chair Parker, apologies, it was also the special condition requiring the removal of the debris behind the building prior to construction.
Okay. So correct to add that, thank you, uh do we have a second? Do you have a second to Commissioner Herbst's um motion? Thank you, Commissioner Laney.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond.
Uh, I think I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay, uh Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five uh uh affirmative, uh zero negative and one abstention. Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from VHB on behalf of Trimont ESS LLC. For the proposed installation of a portion of a twenty three hundred linear foot underground electric duct bank. Along the Alfred Street Public Right of Way in Charlestown. Uh, this has been continued from the December eleventh, twenty twenty five hearing. Uh, we did ask for more information, I think specifically the test boring uh data. As well as uh evidence uh of community support. Uh, in the um context of knowing that the um project is on its way to approval or on its way to construction. The project uh uh writ large, uh so that we know that work done in the right of way now would not be wasted. Um, was that, did I capture that, Elena?
Uh, yes, I believe that uh those were the the main things that we were looking for. And um the additional information is available in the um in the folder in the drive.
Okay, great, okay, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, good evening, everybody, this is Hans Detweiler with Jupiter Power. Uh, I'm joined with Lisa Chow and Howard Mosher from VHB uh and Alexis Gachak uh uh at council.
Okay, great, who's taking the lead here?
Uh, I'll start and we'll we'll kind of roll over to Lisa from there.
Great.
Uh, I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation. There you go, all right. Um, and uh, you know, we did run through this last time, so uh I'll be, I'll be briefer this time around. Um, if we need to back up and answer any questions for anybody who was not present last time, happy to, happy to go back and do that, of course. Um, so Jupiter Power, uh you know, not exactly a household name. Uh, but we are one of the largest companies in the country that is a developer, owner and operator. Of battery energy storage projects. Uh, the projects that we build are what are what are called front of meter projects. What that basically means is we provide wholesale energy services to the grid. Uh, so that's like as opposed to behind the meter projects, which are, uh you know, for instance, if you have uh on one individual property. Uh, a battery system that's providing, providing reliability or backup energy services for one company or one home. Uh, so ours again are providing wholesale energy services to the grid. Uh, and uh we have a a project uh that we're we're particularly excited about uh in Everett and Boston. Go to the next slide. So uh this just shows the outline of the project, all of the actual battery units uh are in Everett. Uh, and then the green line shows the transmission line that's underground. Uh, that connects into the Mystic uh substation. Uh, there on Alfred Street, there's one point of connection in Everett and then an additional point of connection at a different voltage. Uh, in uh in Boston. Um, you know, Boston has very aggressive uh climate reduction goals. Uh, and battery energy storage is highly supportive of those climate goals. Renewable energy sources offshore wind and solar are increasingly cost effective. Uh, however, they're not always available. And so if you want to increase the usability, the utilization of renewable energy resources. Then battery energy storage uh is required for that. Uh, it's an an exciting project in certain, in terms of sort of capturing. Uh, the the spirit of the green energy transition in that uh it's twenty acres out of a former hundred acre. Uh Exxon Oil Terminal, but it's historically a fossil fuel terminal. Uh, we uh will use a project labor agreement for construction of the project. Uh, and I've been pleased with the community support that we've found for the project so far. Uh, next slide, please, um this is where I'll uh I'll turn it over to Lisa. Uh, but this this picture does show the the section that uh is is within Boston, uh which is, which is why we're here tonight.
Thanks, Hans, um good evening, commissioners, my name is Lisa Chow with VHB. As Hans indicated, the image we have on screen um is indicates, you can see there's a magenta dash line. That represents the city limits between Boston and Everett and a portion of the proposed duct bank. Um, that is within Alfred Street, um is located within an AE zone um per the effect of FEMA FERMAP. Um, in this AE zone, which is the land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, has a base flood elevation of ten feet NAVD um eighty eight. Um, the limits are, and if you can go to the next slide. Uh, I don't know if it's on my, oh, there we go. Um, so as I indicated earlier that the, there is um a land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, within a portion of Alfred Street that a portion of the proposed duct bank is located in. Um, and on the screen, we've indicated the um limits of the LS CSF. By identifying elevation ten on the existing condition survey and that is outlined. Um, highlighted in yellow for the um for your reference. Um, approximately three, five hundred and thirty eight square feet um of the project. Is located within the LS CSF. Um, under existing condition, existing is a paved roadway and concrete sidewalk. This will be temporarily disturbed area and then restored to original condition after construction is complete. Next slide, please. Um, so the proposed installation of underground utilities within existing paved areas is considered a minor activity. And we believe the installation of this proposed duct bank within LS CSF meets the criteria for a minor activity. Because the activity is occurring within existing paved area. And is in, is temporary and has negligible impacts to the resource area. It will not permanently alter or pose a significant threat to the resource area. Um, the project will be installing BMPs and erosion control measures as part of the construction logistics planned. Um, and as noted last time, um, construction is anticipated to begin in mid twenty twenty six. Um, at the last hearing, it was requested that the project submit the soil logs for the borings that were completed. Um, within Boston, within the LS CSF and those logs have been shared with the commission. Um, one thing that we um also want to add and noted again last time was. The remaining proposed duct bank is not subject to. Everett Conservation Commission review, um but a copy of the Boston RDA was sent to Everett Conservation Commission. As required by the Boston Kong Kong. Um, and one last note is that um, that again noted last time. And um the Trimont project or this project has concluded several agency review. Processes, processes, and that ha- that includes the Boston PIC Grand of Location. Boston Water and Sewer Commission Utility Plan Review, the Everett Grand of Location, um MWRA AIDM Permit. And the MEPA Phase One waiver fraud.
Lisa's breaking up a little bit.
But that was the conclusion of Lisa's presentation. Yeah, yeah, okay, perfect, perfect timing, okay, thank you, Lisa. Um, just before we go on, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat uh in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your question or send your questions to staff at ccatboston.gov. Um, so I just want to note, uh besides all the um, all of the approvals. Uh, along the uh arduous permitting process for a project like this that Lisa um had mentioned. Uh, just want to read out that uh you got support letters from the Environmental League of Massachusetts, Mystic River Watershed Association. Uh, Everett Community Growers, La Comunidad, um MWRA, you got uh comments back on uh the diligence letter. Mass Mobility Hud uh Hub uh sent a letter of support, uh Sierra Club. And the one that um I'm really um knowing the politics in this area, uh intrigued and impressed by is the city of Chelsea. Um, supported something in the city of Everett, so um I don't know how you did that, but good job, maybe that was Alexis, uh but anyway. Um, so I don't have any questions, um Elena, what do you have on this?
I don't have any questions either.
Okay, uh let's go to Commissioner Laney.
Uh, just looking at the um test pit logs and, which I think is um helpful to see. But is there anything that, I I see there were some um conflicts or findings in those. And was there anything that caused that um routing to be revised? after doing after the test pits were done? I can't remember if we talked about this the last time.
Yes, so after the test pits were completed, that actually influenced the proposed duck bank alignment that we have were presenting before you. So it does influence what what is being proposed.
I see. And that's what you're showing currently.
And that yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Well, yeah, thanks for sharing all those documents, especially test pit logs. It was also really helpful to see the letters of either support or just knowing where you were in your permitting process. Because there are some things there with BWSC's utilities and also especially the MWRA ATM permit coordinations, since you're kind of going right through some major pieces of infrastructure. I guess the only question I kind of had left and I was trying to find in the documents, but who is who owns and operates this transmission cable after it's been installed?
Trumont ESS, which is the the subsidiary of Jupiter Power.
Okay, so in terms of like, and then Jupiter is a subsidiary of?
Jupiter is is the mothership, if you will.
Okay, so it's not wholly owned by BlackRock then, or it's?
Oh, yes, our investors include BlackRock, the principal investor.
So who, if if, you know, the subsidiary of that type of thing, who does that then? Like, I guess this get recorded against and, you know, over time, this critical infrastructure goes with the battery farm, it goes with the transmission grid. It is separable from generation versus, you know, the distribution side. I'm just curious.
Yeah, so the the transmission line and the battery project and, you know, all of the revenues, you know, are are all rolling up to Trumont ESS. So those are all held in that in that holder.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I'm I guess part of the the thing I had last time. And then, I mean, I understand that basically this probably is a candidate for a negative RDA. It just seems like it's substantially more work than we've had, and it's a different structure than we've seen typically. Like, it's ever sourced, digging up their own line, or it's something like that. So just trying to get my head wrapped around it. Appreciate you guys helping clarify some of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. So I didn't quite get a good understanding of the the area that would be impacted within the city of Boston, if we could go back to that map, please.
It would be one more slide.
One more back, yeah.
So the area that's with that's the LS CSF is the area that that's highlighted in yellow. And then the area of work that's associated with the duck bank is that blue hatched area, and it's approximately 538 square feet. What you're not seeing on this image, well, you can see a portion of it, but the dash black line, that's the limits of Boston and Everett. But if you want to see the complete limits, it would be one more slide back. That magenta line south is Boston, and then north of that is Everett, north into the east.
Makes sense. Yeah, I got it. Thank you. So that, so you explained in terms of square footage, but wouldn't it be cubic footage, really?
My understanding and our experience with
So I I think Lisa's audio might have stopped again, and I'll just try to chip in. The impact's best quantified as square feet because that's the the width of the duck bank because there is no impact on the floodplain capacity because it's an existing paved road. We're not changing grades. So there's no real volumetric impact. It the the road will be opened, the utility will be installed, the road will be closed, thus leaving no no impact on the land subject to coastal storm flowage. So we express the impact. Well, they'll be digging, but that's only a temporary.
How deep will the digging be?
It varies. I I want to say that on average is probably about eight feet on average. But some cases, we want to be as shallow as possible. So but we have to avoid the water mains, the other duck banks and things like that. So
So average eight?
That's an estimate, but it's all on the plans. But anyways, that's an estimate. So the excavation will be made, the duck bank will be installed, and then it will be backfilled and the the street restored.
Right. I only ask because you're so close to the water as you dig. I'm just curious about what you'll see. But
Yep.
Hopefully, it'll all go smoothly. But overall, the interesting project, I did like Commissioner Wilson's question. Don't think I got a good understanding of the response. But overall, given that it's this is about battery storage and better climate action, I'm excited to see this going forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I'm I'm trying to understand after the answer to the question. After the it's installed, who is responsible for maintaining it?
Trumont ESS.
And and that is and I I'm not, I'm not clear. That is the operating arm of your parent company?
No, it's not the parent company. It's the project company.
No, no, but that's the operating arm of the parent company, the Trumont Energy Storage?
It's the, well, it's the operating arm for this project.
Okay. And will the
And all the permits and all the assets, everything all roll into Trumont ESS.
Okay, and will there be a local office of Trumont Energy Storage in the Boston area?
Well, we will have a, you know, 20 acre project, will have a number of employees at the site. So you know, there's not a commercial office space per se, but we'll we'll have it. We'll have an ongoing presence. We'll have, you know, people that are on the ground that can be called if something comes up.
Okay, and what what keeps you up at night about this project and its proximity to the water? What's the, say, a different question, what's the worst thing that could happen with respect to this storage line that you're constructing?
The 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 gentile line will be beneath the street. So as as Howard indicated, like, there's no, there's no permanent impact from from the installation of the transmission project beneath the street. And the 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 project site itself, where we're actually putting, you know, batteries, there's a significant elevation shift as you move up there, and we're actually adding more grade to that site. So I mean, we're like, it's a resiliency project. We don't want to get anywhere near storm flowage. We're going to be well above, you know, a- any of the the floodplain levels.
So, but let me, I I appreciate that. But let's just say that on the drawing that we're looking at now, and that yellow area on Alfred Street, let's just say that that there is a flood there and the war and the road gets seriously compromised. What is the the worst thing that could happen if that occurred?
There would not be any impact to the transmission line of a flood of Alfred Street.
And and why is that?
Because it's underground in a enclosed duck bank.
Okay, and your sense is that 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 as it's constructed would be wouldn't fall apart if the road was washed away and there was a flood?
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Eleanor, did we get any hands? Oh, I see some hands. Okay. I think Mr. Green, you're first.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shetan Green. I'm a lifelong Boston resident. I'm also a business agent with the Greater Boston Building Trades Unions. We represent over 35,000 members and their families, just ensuring that people have access to family sustaining wages, benefits and apprenticeship training. Mentioned a project labor agreement. I'm a product of a project labor agreement, which definitely doubles down on exactly what I just said, improving access, making sure people have access to these great jobs, great careers, benefits, wages, and everything that comes. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Jupiter project. On the labor side, this project will be a big project, creating hundreds of jobs for so many years. And it's different from the typical jobs we're used to in this area. Green jobs are helping other states grow work opportunities, and we should be providing these same opportunities for training and work here. We also have the opportunity to teach the next generation about green power, green jobs, and show them how a contaminated dirty dirty energy worksite has been transformed and will assist with the region's energy needs. Boston Public Improvement Commission approved this project unanimously and expressed enthusiasm that this type of project will be based here. And local elected officials and environmental groups have been engaged and supportive as well. Boston has always been a national leader on issues of progressive importance. And the clean energy sector, renewable energy goals and green jobs is the next critical frontier that this project will be a part of. So I'm here tonight to speak in support of this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Hickey? Mr. Hickey, I don't know if we lost you or you're muted. Why don't I go to Mr. Nardone?
Hello?
Hello.
Hey, good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to show my face, show support for this Jupiter Power project. I'm an Everett resident and I have been for the past 10 years. I'm a member of IBW Local 103. And I believe this project has the opportunity to help revitalize the city. Has the opportunity to bring in a significant tax boost, which will help the the city and the schools, and also provide many jobs, green jobs. And yeah, I mean, other than that, I mean, this 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 job has the potential to provide us with more reliable power. As you know, everyone's using more power nowadays and will help meet the high energy demand and provide stable, consistent electricity.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. And I think there's going to be a lot of people joining the ranks of electricians over the next couple decades, hopefully. Let's see, another raised, well, did it go down? Another raised hand, it was, I think, maybe a phone or an iPad 007. John from Springvale Ave. in Everett. There you go. There he is. John, do you want to unmute yourself?
Yep, I'm unmuted now. How you doing, everyone? I'm a lifelong resident of Everett, Local 103 IBW member. Calling to voice my approval and and support for this project. It's great that they're cleaning up the area down there. Great for jobs, great for everything. Thank you. Great presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'll also note that Christopher Wiggins at 16 Elm Street in Everett and I think that was it. In the chat expressed support. And John, you did the chat as well and Christopher twice. Okay. Okay, Eleanor, any emails?
Uh, no emails, no.
Okay, fantastic. Then I entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion control conditions.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, thank you and good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, there is a continuance. Continued is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061996 and Boston file number 2024-021 from Epsilon Associates Inc. on behalf of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for the proposed construction of the North Alston Storm Drain Extension Project to improve the BWC Stormwater Management System at 500 Soldiers Field Road in Alston. Resource areas, land underwater, inland bank, 100 foot buffer to inland bank, 25 foot waterfront and 25 foot riverfront, and that was continued from the July 10, 2024 hearing. The commission will now begin its regular meeting.
And Chair Parker, apologies, not to interrupt, but for the record, if we wanted to mention that the request for amendment was removed from the agenda with less than 48 hours' notice. It was a DP file number 006-2008.
Yeah, why don't you read that in? Because it's not on my script here.
The note may have been at the top of the script. Not sure if
Oh, uh, no, I don't see one. I'm searching.
Yeah, I'm happy to read this into the record.
Please do.
So a request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP file number 006-2008 and Boston file number 2024-030 from Green International Affiliates on behalf of PNG, the Gillette Company, for a proposed increase of the excavation area needed for the construction of a concrete tank pad and placement of 22 bollards to support the installation of a new 9,000 gallon nitrogen tank located at 20 Gillette Park, South Boston, Massachusetts, in the resource area land subject to coastal storm flowage. This project, we received the filing, but the applicant has since requested that we remove it from the agenda, and that was done with less than 48 hours' notice, which is why we didn't update the agenda and the public notice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, first item on our regular meeting agenda is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061844 in Boston file number 2022-006 from Child's Engineering on behalf of Boroughs Wharf condominium trust for the jacketing of the 153 existing steel piles, replacement and kind of the existing floating dock and localized repairs to the concrete superstructure and deck located at 50 Battery Street in the North End. Resource areas, land under ocean and land subject to coastal storm flowage. How's this looking, Eleanor?
Yes, so we conducted a site visit on January 2, 2025. The only deviation from the original plan was that there were four inaccessible piles, which were under the concrete deck, and those were not jacketed. But other than that, based on our review, everything was done according to the permit. And based on this, we would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance with maintenance conditions related to special condition number 51 and 68. There are photos in the drive folder for the commission to review, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, so at that, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061844 in Boston file number 2022-006 with the perpetual maintenance conditions found at 51 and 68.
So moved.
You have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six nothing. Okay, administrative updates?
Yes, so the first administrative update is that the Charles River Vegetation Management Plan for 2024 has been shared with commission staff, and we have added that to the drive folder for the commission's review. Uh, has been shared with commission staff, and we have added that to the drive folder for the commission's review. It's a twelve-page document, so uh, understandable if you didn't have a chance to review that before tonight's hearing. That being said, once you have reviewed it, if you have any questions for us, we're happy to convey that to the project team. Um, and get any answers that you might be looking for.
Yep, great, thank you. I was, I was very impressed with the volunteer efforts here. And I didn't have any questions. Uh, Commissioner Linay, any questions on this?
Uh, not at this time.
Yeah, if you don't have any, we can, we can revisit it uh, next meeting, uh, knowing that there's a lot to read here. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, same idea, I'll take a look at it, the next one, looks good.
Okay, Commissioner Condon?
No questions on this, but on the administrative update topic overall, be good to hear where we are with the local Woodlands Ordinance implementation.
Okay, let's not cut in line here. Um, let me go to Commissioner Richmond, then we'll get back to that.
I don't, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Herbst?
And nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, um, okay, Eleanor, did you want to say something quick on the um, regulations? I think we've hired a consultant and um, that's the last I heard.
Yes, uh, so we have hired a consultant, and uh, we are going to be reaching back out to some of the folks who were involved in um, the phase three regs. When the process was started a while back, um, we're really excited about it. The consultant who we've hired is specifically going to be working with us on our engagement. So um, we're hoping to send out a more detailed update soon, but um, the wheels are turning on it again, which is really, really exciting. And I know that uh, Alice Brown is also on the call if she wanted to add anything else.
Nope, doesn't sound like it. Okay, okay, thank you. Um, did we have any minutes ready before we go to the next administrative update?
We do not.
Okay, so with that, I think my duties for the evening are completed. Um, because I have to recuse myself from the next administrative update. So I would ask Commissioner Herbst if you could stand in, and you're the one who's most familiar with this uh, next project, if you don't mind. And then close out the meeting, you'll have to ask for that really um, unpopular motion to adjourn, um, is that okay?
I'll, I'll see if I can wrangle it out of people.
Fantastic, okay, thank you, good night, everyone, and uh, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, thank you, Chair Parker.
Happy New Year.
So our, our next item actually was on our agenda last week, and we had a presentation from John Rockwood. And this was the request to list the enforcement order uh, for the. Starling, Willett Street area, it's the Starling side, really. And I had actually asked for a delay to get a chance to go out and take a look, and I have now done that. And I know the staff had recommended uh, lis- lifting the enforcement order, so. Unless, if people, if anybody else has additional questions, I'm happy to hear those. Otherwise, I think we could entertain an order to, uh, or a motion to list the enforcement order. But first, does anybody else have any other comments?
I can provide a quick update on the signs as well.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, so uh, Chair Herbst had um, let us know that the uh, signs were a little bit lopsided and were maybe at risk of eventually falling over. So I had shared that with the project team, and uh, they're going to be working to get the signs fixed during the next um, timeframe. When we're not at freezing temperatures, because the soils are a little bit too frozen now. Um, so they'll be fixing those, and that can be something that we look for when um, the next report comes for the other uh, enforcement site that is nearby.
Okay, just to be clear, they're all still up, they all, I think they just weren't inserted quite far enough, so they're, they're not always going to be all the up, I think. Till they corrected. Um, okay, with that said, I would uh, entertain an order to uh, a motion to list, to lift the enforcement order.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Commissioner Condon? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes unanimously, uh, and I think that is it for tonight, unless uh, somebody feels like they want to stay longer. I'll uh, declare as, as Chair Parker generally does, uh, by acclamation, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night, Happy New Year, everyone.
Thanks, so happy twenty twenty-five.